Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One point three, approval of the agenda. I move that we approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that?
Okay. Trustee Wright? We're doing approval of the agenda. Trustee Brown?
I.
Trustee Ross?
I.
Trustee Castillo?
I.
And President Frank?
Hi.
Alright, section two, public commentants. At this point in the agenda, the board welcomes comments on matters of district interest. Is anybody here to give public comments?
There's no public comments.
And there's none on Zoom, or do we allow that?
We do not allow it, but there were no comments came in anyway.
I saw a question, what are all the phone numbers, are they just, is that just gonna be a random comment thing now for Zooming in?
That's how Zoom sets it up, I believe.
That is how Zoom, the invitation on Zoom can be actually received through a phone or a link. So if someone didn't have a computer or a smartphone, they could actually zoom in with just a phone number, but you call in the number instead of actually doing the link.
I just would never have that much of thought, do we have people in all those locations?
That's the standard invite from Zoom.
Okay. I just haven't ever seen that on our agenda.
Some people delete some of that, but that's the standard.
Okay.
And sometimes you need to call another number because another number's being used. So you can't get a busy signal from Zoom.
It's happened. Alright, so now we're on to a free information discussion. Three point one, overall goal of the three study sessions, student achievement or strategic goals and fiscal. On to you, Jen.
Great, so today we have our first of three study sessions. I know that the staff, we have two staff members here that are going to jointly present with myself today, but our entire staff is really excited about the opportunity to dive deeper into the work we do. The first study session today is solely focused on student achievement. Our goals today will be to look at programs, our demographic data. It will also look at our current local assessment as well as state assessment, our intervention programs, our college and career transition to high school for our eighth grade. It will give the board and the public a really in-depth look at how we do our work, the most important work, which is student achievement. And then our next study session is March fourth. It will come quite quickly as the months go. Can't even believe it's February already. And March fourth will really be about board strategic goal setting. So at that meeting, we'll review the current goals the board has put in place, the current mission of the board. And it's strategic that it comes directly after the student achievement summit, because you'll have a really good context of the work that we do on a daily basis, and really what you want to craft as the board's goals moving forward for the next four years. So in addition to that, we have our last study session, which is April 29th, and that is a fiscal focus. The timing of that is strategic, and that is because although the governor's budget has already been released, most of you know this process that happens now. So the governor lays out his budget. It's almost like, one of my favorite quotes in schools, that schools have enough money to do anything they want, just not everything, the same as with the governor's budget. So education is highly regarded in the governor's budget, but there is not enough money to go around for everything in the governor's budget. So there is going to be work that happens between now and June 30th, which is approval of the governor's budget. What will happen in particular right after our April 29th fiscal study session is what's called the May revise. That's where you get the first real in-depth look at what alterations have happened in that and how it impacts us. There will be county trainings with that, with state fiscal experts, but it will give us a nice base going into the May revise, and then having to then approve our budget in June prior to June 30th and our LCAP. So that's kind of the flow of our study sessions. A generalized, like specific goal for that study session is something that we kind of wordsmithed together with our board president, which is to reach agreement on the status of the district. How are we doing with our kiddos, how are we doing with our fiscal solvency? And what is really our vision moving forward of Cuyahoga School, which is pretty exciting, and that vision moving forward will be crafted in the board's strategic goals. So that's our work, and it's a lot, but it's the right work to do, and we're pretty pumped that we're spending this time even on Saturday morning. Any questions or comments around that, just the generalized purpose of the study sessions or today's work? Alright, then we're on to three point two, student achievement and demographic review. Great, so what we are going to do first is look at, the board has printed handout here. I'm gonna go ahead and just take one moment to share my screen so that those watching at home can see the handout. The handout also was posted on the board agenda. So we will share this screen, and we will talk through our work today. It will be wonderful. Okay, so first and foremost, we have our agenda, which would be case two. And I do apologize to the board, typically we would have this projected behind me. There's a little supply and supply, demand and supply issue. We love our maps, they're nice and easy to navigate, but unfortunately it doesn't hook up to our projector. So the parts order at the next meeting, whatever's on the screen that is Zoom, people at home are seeing what we're recording will be projected behind you, but you do have the hard copy in front of you. So it's on the way. We ordered two different venues, straight from Apple and Amazon, and both have not arrived since our last meeting. So just taking a little while. Alright, so our agenda today, we do have a guest with us. We have Teresa Breeden, she's the executive assistant for Casa Robles, Joint Unified School District. She has been working and training with Mary, our new, well, not new, but she's a secretary that's been filling that role. And Mary's out of town with her daughter, and we wish Audrey and her team luck in their softball game in Modesto. And Mary sends her regards, so Teresa, thank you for being here today. And she'll be doing our minutes. We also have with us Liz Vialobos, our principal. For those of you, most of you know, she's starting her 13th year here at Cuyahoga. And we will say over 20 years in education. And then next to her, and you'll hear from Lisa in a moment, we have Lisa Jensen. She's our intervention teacher, she's also on her 13th year here in Cuyahoga. And so Lisa will have lots of information around our assessments and our interventions. So we're excited about that. We've already talked about the goal of the study session. Today we'll dive into student achievement demographics, because it's always changing on who we're serving, and really get a pulse of who our kids are. And we'll talk about our academic programs, interventions, core curriculum, our electives, and one of my favorite things, last two I'm saving for the end, it's like the dessert, which is our extra special Cuyahoga activities, things that make this school special. And that's like learning outside of the classroom, and our community connections, and just the opportunities our kids have. And then last but definitely not least, our new layered services for parents and kids for transition to high school, which I think you guys are really gonna like. Some of you who have older kids are gonna say, I wish we had that then. But it's gonna be great, because we know that our goal is for kids to be successful beyond Cuyahoga. Okay, so I've already gone over our presenter, so I'll quickly go through that one, and we'll go to our demographic slide, which is three point two. So this is, and I put a link here, because I want the public to know as well as the board that this type of data is available to everyone in the public. This is from EdData, and you can actually look up any school in California or district in California. This gives you like that 10,000-foot view of who we serve. When this demographic data was taken, it's taken on census data, which is usually that first Tuesday in October. We had 174 kids, this is always a year behind. Currently at 172, actually, because we just have a new kiddo who came into first grade. So we're currently at 172. So our school is 174 children. The ethnicity makeup of our school is 66% white or Caucasian and 24% Hispanic. The next highest percentage of ethnicity reported is two races. So that would be someone who, you have lots of options within that, but someone who is selected two races, but they don't specifically look at that. Now we have a very small percentage of Asian slash Pacific I-er, and a very small percentage of African-American, but which are not significant subgroups. But white and Hispanic make up the majority of our school.
So I just.
Oh, I'm so sorry, let me say this. Questions along the way. So this is a study session, so it's a free flow of questions and answers, and so I should have said that to start.
So for school reporting purposes, census purposes, Hispanic is considered a race and not an ethnicity?
An ethnicity. This is enrollment by ethnicity.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, so this is, once and for, that's P1, do they update this when they did P2?
They don't. So they only do it based on P1. Great question.
Yeah, but for census purposes, for the US Census, Hispanic is not considered a race. So it's an ethnicity. So like, I'm a European, I'm white, European descent, you know, you could be, you could be. There's a lot of different races that can be Hispanic. So you can be Caucasian Hispanic, you could be, you know, African origin Hispanic.
Or just non-South American.
Yeah, this is by ethnicity, yep, great color. Greta, thank you for that clarified question. Then you'll have what's next on the slide, it says cumulative enrollment, oh no, same slide. Cumulative enrollment is column two. You'll see that that means kids that have come in and out. How many actual different little wonderful human beings did we see throughout the year? And you'll see last year that we were at, I believe it's 190?
197.
Thank you, 197, small i's. Small print, 197, so kids in and out throughout, which was a common thing last year. We've seen way less of that this year. When people returned to full school, people were figuring out where they were gonna be, and if they were gonna stay with us, go to homeschool, people were still moving and settling, and so that's where you see that variation of about 20 kids. Then you have the next column, which is unduplicated pupil count. And that, the unduplicated, as we've talked about, that has to do with the LCAP and the Local Controlled Funding Model. Unduplicated is designated by the state as three major classifications. Free reduced lunch, English learner, and foster view, which include homeless. So currently at Cuyahoga, that's 38% of our students. I think that's important to pause on, because I don't necessarily know we're always picturing that. But it's almost four kiddos out of 10 have some significant challenges within being successful at school, whether that is low socioeconomic status, learning English as a second language, homeless, or being a foster view.
So I know this is unduplicated, but I would imagine some kids fit in more than one of those categories. How is it decided which category that particular kid is counted in?
That's a great question. So in the demographic, there's a ton of options within the EdData. They will have a separate English learner count. Currently ours is at 10. So you'll see that the total number is 10. So you can actually narrow in on some of the actual total numbers, but in this count, it's a general, if you hit one of those, then it's counted within the 38%.
Right, but I'm gonna say somebody's an English learner, and they also get a free reduced price meal. They're not gonna be counted twice, so this is unduplicated.
But they will be recognized within the other graphs that are in there that solely pull out those numbers. Now I will put an asterisk by that, which is this. When a district has less than 11 students in a category, and you'll see this when we get into our student achievement data, the numbers aren't reported, because you have an identifying factor. It basically means at, and I don't know why 11 isn't the magic number, but it is. You could figure out the child they're speaking of in that area. So you'll see on ours, even though we have 10 students in English language services, you're not gonna see our state data report English language learner data, because you could actually figure out, especially if you started looking at grade level, who they were speaking of, and you can't have an identifying factor. And then last but not least, this is one of those examples, Carrie, it's perfect transition, is that we have 36% of our students that are eligible for free reduced lunch. Again, I told these four, because I thought they were significant within our picture of the students we serve, and I feel like it kind of changes our lens a bit, because it's not typically what we picture when we think of Cuyahoga. So, just information.
I'm just kind of curious. No, I'm just curious, because, you know, years ago when I learned was, and I don't really quite remember what all the definition is, for homeless students, I mean, do we, are a large portion of them living with grandparents, with their parents? Is that the situation we're seeing now? Because I know that, when was it that the world blew up in the economy, we had so many kids here?
2008, '09 was a really great.
Right, and I remember a lot of kids, a lot of families moved in with their grandparents, and so that's probably the reason why we had so many homeless. Just then, is that kind of the same situation?
So it depends, so it's almost like a lawyer term, it depends. It depends on the classification of the individual. So in order to be considered homeless, you have to be having a shared residence without lease, or without stability within, like, for example, your heat and electricity bill go to eat, right? And I still may live with my mom, but if I'm a resident within that capacity, that a shared residency is not homeless. Now, if you're temporarily with somebody, then you can, and you're not part of the permanent residency, you could be considered homeless within that. A lot of our parents have, our children have shared residency, which is not typically considered homeless, but it will depend on how it is classified within their own personal bills, lease situations, payment situations of residency, because if you rent, you're not homeless. So there's all those nuances within their own personal living choices. So that's really where we're at, so I guess the answer is it depends. Yeah. This is a live. Oh my goodness, thank you, Carrie, yes.
It's not a question, well, actually I guess it is. Of these four, you said you only picked these because you thought they were applicable. How many did total order? So could you have picked from?
That's perfect, actually, that's exactly what I was gonna say, this is a live link. So if you were to click on this link, and this is a PDF, and it's on the touch of the agenda, you could actually see the different categories that are.
Just how many in ballpark categories?
Oh, I believe if I had to give you an estimate, there's about 11.
11 categories under demographic.
Right, you can look at gender, you can look at, yeah, in fact, if you.
And I don't have.
Each one you can click on, and it does different explanations. And you can sort it by business or that, whatever, so each one itself, you can have it sorted a different way.
And you can look at numbers versus percentages as well. So you always want to make sure there's this little, great little, and you see it on these graphs, there's a hashtag sign and a percentage. So you want to make sure when you're grading, when you get that data, okay, am I talking about percentage or actual numbers?
Ooh, puts this together.
The state of California through CalPads. So our data goes to CalPads, and this then is crunched to the state of California. EdData is sourced through California Department of Ed.
I have a quick question, I don't need to link the answer, I'm just curious, I'm looking at this. What's the, for reduced meal, when they, what's the income?
Oh, the threshold, oh gosh, you know, it varies by number of people in the family. I believe, I, you know what I'll do, I don't guess, but I'll get back to you guys.
Well, I'm just curious, I'm looking.
Yeah, I wanted to do a, I wanted to do a number that's more accurate, just because it does vary by year. I know a few years ago it was a family of four, your $20,000 is free, but then there's reduced statute too, so let me get that number for you. Let's keep going, so this is an overall picture of the demographic side of it. Now, this is a review, so I won't spend a lot of time on the cast data, because we did go over this. But we are gonna transition, because when we went over this in November, we talked about how our kiddos did in the old grading system of the California Department of Education. And we looked at, unlike the state of California, who looked at the 2018, 19 benchmark, we continue to make progress there. The overall slide for this is that the state, last year as a whole, made progress compared to the 2020 year, or 2021 year, but they're still not back to the 18, 19 year. That's not the case with Cuyahoga. Our data is still improved from the 18, 19 year. The problem with those comparisons, as we spoke in November, is that the test is different. So that's why we're gonna transition, you'll see, I wanted you to see the old slides here, what the state produced, we're gonna move down one slide here. You'll see overall, this is a really familiar one, with the circles in the green, and the red and the yellow. We had just about 70% of our students at or above grade level in English Language Arts, 60, in math, which is exceptional, and I know that feels like, what do you mean, Jen? That seems like, that's not high. The math score is just about doubled state, so it's exceptional. I did, in November, call out some of those big comparisons, so if you go to the next slide. And we're gonna spend way more time in data when we get to the new rating, so this is really just that review. But if you go to this slide here, you'll see in 2019, in the state of Califor, oh sorry, for Cuyahoga, we had 65% at or above. Now we're at 69, so you can see even on our benchmark here, prior to COVID, we've continued to advance. Then you can see those comparisons in the middle blue one. The state of California this year is at 47% in ELA, we are at 69. They're at 33% in math, at at or above standard, we're at 60. So I said almost double, it's more like 46% or so, 45%. And these are some of the things that we talk about, because we do have a unique situation at our school with small classrooms and paraeducators, but with that context, you want to be able to say it's working. And so that's really the power within this, is that we're seeing that the special things that we talk about later in our academic programs and interventions are having impact, which is really important. You'll, the last one is the pink slide, which compares San Francisco County, which would be more like comparison, although not, you know, not apples to apples. As a county, they were, we were 51% at or above standard in English Language Arts. As I said, Cuyahoga is 69, and as a county, we were 38, which wasn't above the state, but in Cuyahoga, it's at 60. I really think this goes back to what we just talked about, our demographics. I will tell you, as your proud superintendent of Cuyahoga, the first thing people will say is that, okay, Cuyahoga doesn't have any challenges. We just looked at our demographics, and though we don't have the concentrated challenges that some of our partner districts have, we do have challenges. We are 38% unduplicated, so it's not like we're sitting there at 90% of kids, you know, have mom and dad and all the money in the world, that this is misconception of our population of students. So it is important for us to note that. But also note that there are districts around our county that have more concentrated need than we do, which is that comparison. So I think what will nicely transition, oh, before we do, this is our highlight, if you go to the next slide, it's our highlight reel. And we just have to pause on this, because there's some pretty awesome things here. Middle school, particularly, if you look at the, one of the orange squares, seventh grade. Middle school is a challenge throughout, actually, I shouldn't say middle, seventh and eighth grade. No matter if you have a K8, if you have a middle school or junior high, is a very great challenge throughout California and the nation. And you'll see, for example, our seventh grade students, 75% of them scored at or above standard in ELA, and 70% in math. It's incredibly high.
How large is that class?
Oh, gosh, what's the exact number?
21?
21. So it's not young, but it's 21, it's little, but really, really stellar work.
That's the one, the one thing I see when you're looking at percentages rather than numbers, it only takes two or three students here to change that percentage considerably.
Yeah.
Whereas in a state or a larger district nearby, it takes a lot more. And so, I'm not sure what we're talking about when it comes to numbers of students. Are we losing or gaining depending upon how many students are involved?
Yeah, Val, I think that's a really good point. There is a phrase that people have transitioned to, you know, in educationese, everybody likes a new motto. But that is true, like every time, you're like, oh, here's the new motto. For years it was all means all, right, that was all means all, all means all, or every child, every day, whatever it takes, there's always a motto that goes through education. But I will tell you the one that directly relates to what you just said, Val, is each and every student. So in Cuyahoga, because we are so small, each and every student matters within the data. Because three failures within one class, or three struggling students that we don't get to with need and don't get to grade level drastically impact our data. It's significant. Where one student or two students here or there, because you know, you look at a bell curve, and you say, oh, there's gonna be struggling students, and there's always, those fringe kids drastically do impact our data. So I believe that the impact is actually greater within each and every student. You have two students who aren't at grade level in this class of seventh grade, right? You have 20 kids, that's 10% already. So I mean, it's knowing each child by name and need, and getting them what they need, which is actually one of the key parts of what Lisa will talk about in our interventions, and why we're actually truly blessed to be in a small school. And because we can do that with each and every student, which is pretty remarkable. Let's transition to the new data, and then we'll jump into that kind of, because that's really what everything's gonna be about now, is we're gonna move towards what's now called, there's a big scope of the California way.
What's the, wait, what's the new motto?
Oh, wait, oh no, the new motto is each and every student.
It is the current motto.
Yeah, that's what this year has been about, because of the transition back, the challenges within students. Instead of all, they felt the significance with each and every student, like Sarah, and Johnny, and Scout, and whoever, like that actual kid versus a generalized all. That's kind of where people are. But the beauty for us is that we can actually do it.
Right.
Where it's unfortunate in other places where you can say that, but if you have 25% of your students, and you have a district of 7,000 that aren't at grade level, can you even start to do individual, you can't, because it's an imploding model. But in our case, potentially.
With 21 kids?
Yes.
In seventh grade, yes.
Yeah, each and every, yep.
It's pretty difficult to slip through the cracks.
So the new California dashboard is what you see here, so that's this guy. You'll notice it's not colorful, and it did put the link there. I have gone down the rabbit hole in this link. So it's quite interesting, and Lisa and I and Liz are really excited about doing this with our March 3rd PD, with our teachers, is really getting them to see some of the attributes of this new dashboard. The reason why, first and foremost, the reason why there's no colors is because this is called a stat sheet. So when the pandemic happened, school closure happened, you know, we put a stay to testing that year in 2020. Then the next year, there was modified testing, and it wasn't required, but it was optional, so that's 21. And then last year is 2022, which was required testing again. So there was like these cycles that happened, no testing, optional testing, required testing, and now we have this year.
And the testing.
And the test changed. So in that, in the 2021 year, it was a shorter test. And in the 2022 year, the test was longer and adapted to the students, but not as long as the original test, so lots of changes, basically, summary. So with all of that, they basically did a reset. So, hey, we've been through a lot, there are lots of changes, test changes, educational program changes, pandemic. So here's a reset. Everything is purple because. So here's a reset. Everything is purple because we're not comparing it. When uh, the state testing changed about, gosh, eight years ago, now it's kind of shocking, it's so fast. They changed to a model of status and progress. So when before you see us like, we're green, right? It wasn't just about student achievement. It was, did you make progress from the last year? The only way you can do that is if your, your test is consistent. So since our test had changes, there is no progress. This is just status. Next year, you will see these lovely bar graphs and they will actually be color coded as well. So you'll see that. But today, it's all purple. So let's just talk a little bit about it. You'll have the key indicators, the first one, oh, and then some more, because we love complexity in California. The first two key indicators are chronic absenteeism and suspension rate. You want these to actually be low. Everything else on the chart you want high, these are the ones you want low. I will tell you, if you see chronic absenteeism is very high. It is very high in the entire state of California. So if you miss more than ten percent of the school year, so ten day, uh, ten percent of the school year, you will be considered a chronic absentee. So I, I, Liz and I can speak specifically to this. We continue to struggle with attendance here. Part of that is uh, COVID's variations that are continuing to run through our school, which means you're looking at five minimum days of accesses, right, for a student, minimum, uh, up to ten. Um, the second part is unique to uh, Cayucus, is that um, people like to take trips at different times of the year. Um, and we need to, so this is one of those growth areas. We need to get better and better at having our parents look at short-term independent study. Some do.
So short-term, when you go on a trip and you do short-term in, independent study, you're not considered absent?
That's correct.
Okay.
As long as you do the work. So you can get that, you can do short-term independent study, but never turn in your work. If you don't turn in the work, you don't get attendance. So there's twofold there, which is, we are just still living on the, the, basically if we looked at a wave, the, the very small part of the wave that's kind of settling at our toes at that shore edge of the pandemic, although we've had a weird spike just recently, uh, the last two weeks. Um, but also it's looking at our process of procedures. And Mary has been a champion of short-term independent study and being a liaison with teachers and, and parents with that. But that's the other part of it. It's getting a little bit tighter with that piece, because being present here does matter. Our teachers and what they give our kids every day does matter. And so we do want to encourage that. Um, it is a systemic problem in the state, in actually the nation, but I can tell you in California data across the board.
So if somebody's sick with COVID, obviously we don't want them at school. That's not considered an excuse absence or just chronic absenteeism irrespective of whether they're excused or not excused.
Correct. So uh, so they would be gone five days. If they, five days is the, the magic, five days, the magic number around short-term independent study. So even if you're sick with COVID, unless you're very, very ill, um, we don't want you to obviously feel stressed and be, do a homework all day. But if you're also, you could have, in most cases with children, um, you know, it's a one to two day where all are feeling great, and then you have to wait out the other days. Um, you could do sh- even short-term independent study in those. But if you're absent for numerous days, you look at that. Now where we do put a lens on that is what's called through the SAR process. So when there's disciplinary procedures related to absences, if they're all medical absences, we don't go after the family on SAR, because there's a medical.
I want to define SAR.
Okay, so it's the um, Student Attendance Reporting Board Accountability Review Board. Yeah. So it is a process in the state of California where you look at students who have poor attendance. And it is a, a consecutive process. First, you look at letters, you look at individual meetings at the school site level with the principal. Then you eventually get to a level of a student that's excessively late or late or absent that you can actually bring in what's called the SAR board, which is community members that have probation, um, resources, sheriff. It can have, um, uh, if there's a homeless issue, an advocate around that. And they come together and look at what they can do to help that family get their child to school. Um, sometimes the family, um, isn't, isn't inclined to change their behavior and then it can become punitive. Which means parents can get fines, um, and um, it becomes a punitive issue for parents if there isn't a response. Okay, suspension rate, you'll notice that we're medium. We'd love for this to be low. Um, the suspension rate, I do want to make sure we understand, is also an unduplicated number. So it means that if Johnny got suspended five times, he's not in my data five times. It's single student with a single suspension. So we're on the medium level there. This is where Val, uh, so eloquently put it. Um, we're little and so a few suspensions get that, that bar graph up quite quickly. Um, so, kind of where we're at. Uh, to balance, I will tell you, because we do want to save it for better school. Um, and sometimes suspensions are necessary when you've exhausted the interventions needed. Um, when we get to the next layer, which is the very last part of this slide, um, I'll tell you about when we need to really change our lineup, lens about suspensions, uh, which is through the, what's called the Equity Report.
I have some more questions while we're back.
Next, as many as you want.
So I know they can do the independent study, but is there protection for teachers? Like you can't come in on Monday and say, I want five days tomorrow.
Correct.
I mean, is there a limit that teachers don't get so overburdened?
Yeah, there's a, there's a policy. So the notice for is two weeks. Yeah, two week notice for teachers. Thank you for that. Uh, prior to the independent study. Yep. Thank you, phone of friends. Um, the next one is what we talked about, English learner progress. You're not going to see that individually reported on this, because our numbers are less than all of them. Um, then you'll see, again, these are the ones we went high on. Uh, English Language Arts were, were high. There's one more bar, which is very high. And then in mathematics, you see we're high. Um, and we're, and then we're going to dig into that a tiny bit when it goes to the Equity Report. The last ones are measures. We have to write to the measures that are related to those areas, which are things like instructional materials, academic standards, do we engage our parents, what is the evidence for that? And so that's like the little, uh, the nice little report I get to write and submit to the state and then they validate, um, those areas. One more lens on this is, and this will all tie in, is all of these areas are directly tied to the priorities in LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula. So when we do our LCAP, um, handouts, I always list on there our actions and then it says state priority one, two, which is parent engagement or core curriculum or student achievement. All of these measures on the California dashboard link them to the priorities of your, um, local control accountability.
This parents and family engagement measure.
So in this one, it's not a data, you'll notice it doesn't have a bar graph.
Right, it says standard depth.
Yeah, I have to actually write to it. So I have to tell them, here's all the things I'm doing to engage our families. And they look at that and validate that that meets the standards. So someone actually reads what you write.
Okay.
Uh, so you give meeting dates of, um, LCAP meetings or stu- uh, school site council meetings, uh, family literacy nights, um, PTA organization being active, um, all of these areas. So we basically provide a little snapshot narrative of our outreach to parents. Uh, we usually give them a total of how many parent squares go out there. So email communications, all of those things, newsletters. And then we write to that in the state database.
And attendance of parent teacher conferences, does that also go in?
Um, the option for parent teacher conferences, basic parent conferences goes in there, yep.
Okay, so what is an actual, I mean, if, let's say no parents show up for the second grade to any, you know, or just very few show up, that doesn't like, it's not the actual engagement. It's the, the attempted engagement by the school that's being measured.
Okay, yeah, it puts the onus on the school to provide ample opportunity for parents to be part of the process.
Okay.
Good clarification. So then, the next piece is the far right of this slide. And the far right of this slide gives you, uh, the overall, like we said, around English Language Arts and Math. But you zoom in and you'll see underneath there something called the Equity Report. This is new. So this is new to the state of California's dashboard. Um, the Equity Report then digs deeper into, and again, there's a live link there, digs deeper into what are your significant subgroups performing, for example, in English Language Arts? So if you look at ours, you'll see, gosh, we have one subgroup in medium, one in high, and one in very high. So what this, what this, the point of this Equity Report, and this is again, first year out, is are there desperate, or disparate, sorry, disparate groups within your district? So ours is actually.
Disparate mean?
Uh, variance. It's a great variance between one group and another group, a big gap of achievements, right? So you'll notice in ours, we don't have like, for example, um, I'll tell you what ours are. So in English Language Arts in medium, that's our Hispanic group of students. They're performing in a medium range in English Language Arts. And the high group is our socioeconomic disadvantage. You don't typically see that by the way. So like I told you, I went down a rabbit hole. Oh, I started looking up all the different districts going, okay, like this, where are our other groups for, like what, are these, you know, how are we doing with this? Even though this isn't a comparison tool, it gives me perspective. Wh- I had a hard time finding another district who had low socioeconomic students performing in high achievement.
How can you tell that, that what if you're behind is a low socioeconomic?
You actually, if you click on these, you can actually, on the website, you can click on these and start going down into all these areas.
Oh, this is way too much fun.
I know, I know.
I was listening through this afternoon. I'm not going to go look at this website.
I know.
I'll never.
For, for all of us data nerds out there, this is like really too much. Um, I will share with the board, on March third, we will present all of this data to our staff. And you see slide by slide these type of things and the board will also have that. But because today it's like wide scoping information, but I wanted you to see this part of it. So, and then the very high is our white population. So you'll see medium is Hispanic. High was socioeconomic disadvantage and very high was our white ethnicity. So that's that breakdown. Where the Equity Report begins to be valuable is when you start seeing that great variance, right, within a district, where you possibly would see, uh, certain ethnicities performing very low and others very high. And you start going, what is happening here? Um, why, why do we have this situation? Or for example, in suspension rate, it also has an Equity Report. So you will read, if you've read, uh, you know, any articles around educational data, you'll see that in, in general terms, you'll see an overrepresentation of possibly male students or what's called BIPOC, which is uh, male students of color that are represented in suspension data. So you start to see those large disparities between that. And then your district should reflect on the actions that they have. Happy to report, you're not seeing those, uh, through our data. Because you'll see, uh, you know, like medium is still a standard base, or you're not looking at at high at-risk populations and very high populations. Um, but it is a lot to look at and we'll dive more and more into that. This, this dashboard wasn't released until, uh, mid to end December. So it's literally six weeks new. So I will tell you, I mean, I've worked in it. I'm obviously weirdly excited about it. Um, but uh, we'll go more and more into this data with our team in March, which we'll share with the board as well. But overall, it's looking quite good. But you'll see, um, we're going to see a lot of districts that are going to have to make some changes because they have these big gaps between especially things like, um, low socioeconomic of being at very low and then, um, your other students being at very high. And you're going to have to go, well, what, what are we going to do about that? So that's the point of it. So that's where we're at. Okay. Now, this is all like ten thousand feet above, right? It's your state testing data. It's once a year. And it's looking at that piece, how did we do? A lot of people liken state data to like an autopsy. Because realistically, it's done at the end of the year. You don't get the data until possibly, you, you, you should get it in, uh, September. This year we got it, it just like end of November, uh, because it was all delayed. And so it was like, wow, the, the ship is already sailed, right? Um, the eighth graders are gone, they're at high school. So it's a little bit like an autopsy. So important to most districts is to have wellness checks, much like going to the doctor, because you don't want to wait till the end and go, hey, how do we do? How healthy am I? Um, and that's where I will transition, because you're also probably for the Tyler and me talk, um, to Lisa. And what Lisa's going to do, our intervention teacher, is talk to you a little bit about the local assessments that happen along the way, so our teachers can have course correction. Chris, before we go.
Just real quick, so the English should explain the three equity groups. Math has two. Is that, uh?
Um, oh, math has two because, um, in, um, in the math one, two of the subgroups are located in, um, high and one is located in medium. So because they're both underneath that same one.
Okay, so it's still, the medium is still.
Yeah, and I can actually, while Lisa talks, I'll pull up what that is and clarify, uh, which one is which in math. Yeah, but that's, yeah, what you'll see is sometimes you'll have like three listed in one area.
So why would that number been with two?
I know.
Yeah, it would be two.
I know.
Cause it's. Cause that's the number of student groups. There's two student groups.
Yeah, I'll pull it up and see what that is. Cause there shouldn't be, it, I mean, it should be, I know in math, I had two listed in one area, but I want to make sure before I say which one it is.
But it's fine. It's fine.
I have, okay, one more thing.
Six weeks new.
So on this one.
I'm sure there's peaks within those as the first.
So well, let's say somewhere on this website that we have three groups. Cause if you look at English, there's three groups.
Yeah, so in this website, when you click on the Equity Report underneath that, you scroll down and what you'll see is like it would say on ours, very low, it says very low to header and there's no groups listed underneath. And then you scroll down and then it'll say, okay.
So basically the total should be three for all of them. Which goes to Chris's question.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
An analytical self.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at it and see, um, while Lisa does some of her presentations, see if there's a, a rationale for that. Okay, so Lisa Jensen, so, um, all of you that are listening to her recording, um, you're going to hear the wonderful voice of Lisa Jensen. She's our intervention teacher here at Cayucus. So, and then Lisa, you just have to let us know, uh, the board and of course people at home, when you're flipping slides.
Yes, I can very.
Yes, okay, yeah, very exaggerated.
Yes, sorry. I'll hear my pages. Okay, so speaking of wellness checks, today I'll be going over the various assessments that we give students throughout the year to monitor their progress. So the first assessment that our students take is the MAP test. Uh, the MAP test is a diagnostic tool that we use to show whether or not a student was making progress towards state standards. So this is a test that students get in both reading and in math, and we give it to them three times a year. We use it at the beginning of the year as a baseline. Um, and then we look at the middle and end of the year scores to measure growth up until that point. And this is an assessment that we give students kindergarten through eighth grade. And here is an example report from the MAP assessment. So the MAP assessment gives, uh, teachers a lot of data and a lot of, um, reports to look at. Um, here on this slide, I included a snapshot of a class's overall performance, what it would look like after they were, they were done taking the MAP assessment.
Well, Lisa, good.
Sure.
So that's one of the question I had. I didn't understand this. It says number of students by percentile, five, six, two, two. This is one class.
Yes, this is just one.
Oh, I was trying to, like, those numbers don't work.
No, 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 not at all. No, this is just a snapshot, just so that you have a perspective of, yeah, an example of a report that a teacher might get after their.
So this class has fifty kids.
Yes, yes. So, um, from there, a teacher would look at, okay, how is my class performing overall? Then they could get, um, into more specifics by clicking on, um, these different bands here. Okay, how many students are performing at the eighty percent or above? Then they can actually look at, um, individual student reports and get even more detailed information. Uh, it shows, uh, the test history that the student, um, like every time the student has taken the test, how those scores compare to each other, to see whether or not they're making progress. And then they can also see the areas of weakness as well as the areas of strength based on the state standards. Um, and then we also get really good information on how our students are performing, um, against national norms.
So now these, this tests, um, are these something that's required by the state or is this something?
Well, it's a, a local benchmark that we use. So.
Okay, so it's something we've chosen to use?
Yes.
And, and when students move from district to district, do these tests follow them?
Um, yeah, so the, the, all of their scores are being accumulated file. So other schools can look at these scores and. And um, we actually have had some students come to us, and by looking in their cum file, we do see that other districts are using this assessment tool, so we can compare their previous scores to how they're performing here at KIUCIS Elementary.
And there are numerous districts, even in our area, that use it too. Uh, this is our, has used the MAP assessment, Cass uses it, I believe Templeton uses it as well. And it's National English, which is great.
And I know there's a school in Colorado that's also, I was just thinking this in my file. So I just flipped.
I feel the, the film strips.
Yes. I guess I should be more specific, I flipped the packet page. All right, so more local assessments that we use, so in addition to the MAP assessment, we use um two benchmarking tools called DIBELS and M-CLASS. DIBELS measures the literacy skills of students and then their math reasoning for M-CLASS. So DIBELS is literacy and then M-CLASS is for math. So while the MAP test does give us really good data regarding specific standards and overall growth, these benchmark assessments really target and measure the specific skills that students need to be successful in reading and in math. Uh, we give these assessments three times a year, and um they are shorter tests, they're about one to three minutes each.
Okay.
Very quick.
I understand it's one to three minutes, so three times a year, I get a three-minute test, and that's supposed to measure in a deeper?
It does, so for example, for DIBELS, um, it, so it stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy. So like a student in kindergarten would take this assessment, from there, we would see, okay, do they know their letter sounds? Are they able to segment phonemes? And then that gives us really good information on, okay, um, are they gonna be able to blend CVC or do?
Oh, I get the information, but in one minute, I just don't see how that
That's just how the, it's research-based, it's
And it's looking at automaticity, so you know how you could say, like, if I showed you um the letter uh K, you could, and I say, I'm gonna show you a letter, you're gonna give me the sound for that letter. And how automatic are they, or are they still having to think through a process of it? So if it's automatic, boom, 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 it's more likely then to be applicable to uh reading. Or they have a nonsense word one, so some kiddos, when they have a nonsense word, so nonsense is a fake word, it's measuring, how do you word attack? So if you come across a word you don't know, like, do you, do you have a strategy to go, okay, let, let's say our word is, I'll give you guys a nonsense word, let's do it, it'll be fun. I, there used to be a really big one that we used to do, but I won't do that one, cause it would like take up half the board. Um, but if, we even did this, so um, I'm gonna show it to you. Can you use a pen real quick? This'll be fun. Um, you guys wanna, you guys wanna multi-syllable word or a one-syllable word?
Let's give a CVC.
A CVC. Oh, we, oh, we're gonna put a blend in it.
Okay.
So we'll do
They're all having too much fun with this.
Okay, don't say anything out loud, okay, right now. But basically, I'm gonna show you a nonsense word, you haven't seen it before, your brain is gonna either read it automatic, or it's going to go and sound it out, right, to get to it, there's actually two pronunciations for this word. Okay, so that's it?
Oh, that's not fair.
That's not fair, that's an old board member's last
Oh, is it? Oh, my gosh.
And what's so funny is because everybody, is, you know, I hear people call it
Okay, new one. All right, there it is. So if you have automatic, uh, what's called phonological processing, you'd say frick, right? Some kiddos will say ferk because they flip their I and their R, um, cause you know, that's a common thing that happens when they're still learning. Or some kiddos will go frick, okay? So that kiddo, great, accurate, may only get five words done. Where, so it's, we're dealing with that automaticity to apply, it's actually
That makes sense, I see.
Good explaining.
And the word used for that is fluency. Okay. Flip. Not frick.
My favorite word was a word called a getter swiffer. So like, you look at it, cause it's very big, but then it has like the double consonants, so you can't say eater swiffer, cause then you just, they're not understanding that two Ts and that first chunk of it, getter swiffer. You can picture the letter, so I mean, it was super fun to do for more complex words.
So here is an, an example of a report from our DIBELS benchmark assessment, this is of a upper grade, not necessarily a primary grade. So in this example, reading fluency and reading comprehension were assessed. And reading fluency is the ability to read with accuracy, speed, and expression. So if you look at this particular student, um, where you see the arrows popping out, um, this student is meeting the reading fluency benchmark for this point in the year, but their comprehension score was in the yellow. So this teacher would use this information to adjust their teaching and focus more on comprehension strategies. And not this, just this student, but any student who, who performed similarly in this area. So it gives the teacher a roadmap of, okay, how are my students doing? And then they can really zero in on the specific skills that they need or support them.
I love this one, because so often, when someone reads beautifully, you know, you're, and especially, again, let's think about if you have a class, unlike ours, of 32 kids, 34 kids, and they read beautifully, you're like, oh, fantastic, right? But are they getting it, which is the whole point of reading? Um, this gives that big red flag of, oh, gosh, you know, Chris may read really nice, but gosh, it's going in one ear and out the other, right? So like, it's not sticking, and it will make them um pause and really look at, what do I need to do? When Chris is reading, he might read beautifully, I might stop him and say, so who's working on this? And ask those really probing questions along the way, so that they're stopping and really trying to image what they read uh versus just getting through the words.
And then to piggyback off of that, if you look at this example, the student's accuracy is also in the yellow, so that acu, that accuracy being in the yellow is also affecting their comprehension. So they're reading quick enough, they've got that speed, but they're not really um retaining the information or really understanding it. And you can tell because the accuracy percentage is suffering a little bit since the 95th percentile, or 95%.
I'm gonna just a quick, are these optional, or are they just mandatory for all the teachers? And then you just get it?
Well, they're, they're um optional for the school, but not optional for the students. Because we've decided that that's our local benchmarking tool, and this is really
Teachers, it's not optional for the teachers?
No, I mean
You have, the teacher has, well, I mean, obviously, they're not gonna use it, or they don't like it, they don't, they're not, there's okay, la la la, but
Well, school-wide, we are using it, so, yeah, so I guess it is optional, I mean, you know, school doesn't necessarily have to use these benchmarks, but we want these benchmarks so that we can um monitor how the students are progressing.
And the layer to that, that of support is, um, we have both Brett, who's our special education teacher, and we have Lisa, and we have Sarah Johnson, who does math and math intervention, who are the layer of support for assessment when needed. So let's say we have a teacher, they are feeling overwhelmed of teaching, they're doing all these things, and they need help in ministry. Um, Lisa and Brett and Sarah, and she'll actually talk about that in the MAP assessment, um, will come in, they'll help with the administration of it, or do the administration of it, and then the teacher gets the data. So yes, we require it, but we also provide the support uh for the in-classroom teacher, cause it is a lot, we get that.
Yeah, and we definitely want them to feel comfortable with it, and you know, all the teachers wanna be there while this is happening, because it gives them, even in real time, how is the student performing? The teachers wanna know, how did they do, you know, what specifically were they having a hard time with? Because I mean, that really is what they need to
I just wonder if it's optional for a teacher, like, yes, I really need that, I like that, or a teacher going, you know what? I really, I'm good, I'm good with my students, I'm good with assessing, I'm good with what's going on, so it's always optional for the teacher.
It isn't.
Yeah. Thank you.
Lisa's like, Jen, can you answer that one? Our teachers, though, I will say, just because they're, eh, in general terms, so reflective about how they're doing, I think, um, in the elementary cluster I was in, was that last week or the week before? Um, they were talking about the new implication of the MAP assessment, like how automatic are kids with math and math facts? Because then we get the complexities of math, and if they're still counting on their fingers, obviously, that makes it difficult. Um, Joanne Montgomery, our kindergarten teacher, was like, I wanna give it, when can I give it?
Yeah.
Uh, cause we were like, we don't wanna give them, like, we don't wanna layer another thing for teachers. So our team, our intervention team came in and did the MAP assessment. And our kindergarten teacher, first thing was like, when can I do it? Because I learned so much watching them. Because when you teach, it's such a reciprocated process, like, we're talking and we're learning. But in this, it's like, how can they do on their own? And you have to pull back and just see them perform, that gives you a lot of information.
They're invested. Okay. And then this is an example of the M-Class MAP benchmark report that a teacher could use to quickly identify the mathematical strengths and weaknesses of their students. Um, this allows them to group students by similar area of need, so that they can target their instruction towards these needs.
Is this for one student?
Um, this is for one student, yeah, and this specifically, I believe, was um a kinder, uh, first grade, I think. I believe, I didn't wanna include specifics, but yeah, I believe so. Are there any questions about that?
And the math is new this year.
The math is new this year, yep, and we will, um, we start our second round of M-Class MAP assessments this coming week, so we're very excited, because now we'll have beginning of the year scores to compare with um up until this point.
So in March, when, when we are having our PD day with our teachers, we'll be looking at beginning of the year, their literacy development, or in especially upper grades with the MAP assessment, how have they progressed? Um, and up until that mid-year point. And that will help them kind of, again, direct, directly change their course, be able to refer to intervention, look at their own in-class intervention, especially if you see systemically, gosh, no one in my class is getting that. Then it's what, what, um, it's a famous educational researcher, he said it, unfortunately, he passed away, but Rick DeFor would say, it's called mirror check time. So you look in the mirror, right? If you have a whole class that's missing a concept, then you look in the mirror and go, how do I do this? If you have 90% of your class getting it, and this kiddo's not, then you say, okay, how do I help this individual kid? So it, it changes your reflection as a teacher on what you should do next.
Yeah, and on the other end of it, I mean, it'll tell you, okay, which one, how many of my students are really getting this and are ready for something more? So it also offers a lot of um information on which students need that enrichment, not just intervention.
That's a key point, thank you for saying that. Yeah, actually, that's the Rick, Rick DeFor's last question, when you're reflecting, is what do you do if they already know it? Right, so what do you do if they don't learn it? But what do you do if they already know it? And how do you then advance the kids in that class and differentiate um for those high-achieving kiddos?
So are we on?
We are.
Okay.
Is that where you are?
That's where I am.
Okay, great, that's where I am too. So we're on our next steps. So as a team, we looked at what is next then with all of this, right? So we talked about the demographics, we looked at overall assessment. We know that one of our major next steps is March third. So March third, uh traditionally, uh has been reserved as a PD day, a day in March, not necessarily always the third. Um, but in practice, in KIUCIS, it's been kind of a teacher work day, teacher catch-up on grading day. Uh, not that that's not needed, that people always need extra time. I, we do want uh everyone to know, our teachers, now we have a staff meeting this week, that we are doing PD day. We are gonna learn and grow together, and it will be centered on the, the achievement data that you're looking at now. So we're gonna look at those equity reports in a, a more depth focus, and then we're gonna look at our beginning of the year and mid-year progress when it comes to those three assessments we just talked about, the MAP assessment, the DIBELS, and then the M-Class, which is the MAP portion of that automated, how's our math doing? And more importantly, I think, is we're gonna look at it as a, a full team. Because um it's really important what eighth grade needs to know about what kinders learning about what seventh grade. And again, it's the beauty of having all of us together, and we are owning all kids here. They're gonna see those kids in a year, or two years, or they saw those kids two years ago, and be able to have that conceptual progress of individual student growth. Um, so we're, we're pretty pumped on that. We will give teachers time too during that day, so it's not gonna be seven hours of data. Um, so we're not, we're not doing that, but there'll be a nice, large chunk of that, and then give teachers time to to cut up and grading and getting ready for conferences and next step next. The other part is, um, we implemented this year what's called a cost team, and you'll see it on the notes there, which is Coordination of Services Team. Um, and that really looks at, it's wonderful, wonderful to have layers of support, but we all have to talk. Even though we're in this little, small school, we need to make sure that if a child's getting English language development, are they also getting pulled for literacy, are they also getting pulled for math intervention? Are we looking at these other services, are, you know? So we're really working as a team, and we've identified uh students with great risk and need, and have a group of our intervention teachers, who is in myself, our counselor, together to say, what is the most important right now? How do we loop in this family, what supports needed and for those at-risk kiddos? So really having those strategic conversations.
So, or, just out of curiosity, so are EOL students, are they being pulled? Or are they being worked with within the classroom, or classroom activity is going on?
Oh, okay. Yeah, and actually, there's a slide coming up about that in intervention, um, which is, I think you're gonna really like, we've made a slight transition. So we, it's called, a state called the Integrated Designated ELD. Um, but you're gonna see how we do it here in KIUCIS. And this year, we've ramped up some of what's called the Designated ELD, which is that specific pull-out individual, um, work with students that have, um, what's called a newcomer or like a level-one status. Who are really struggling because they, they are just learning the language. But we'll, we'll talk about that shortly, great question.
And then on March third, um, professional development, are paraeducators included in that?
They, um, they have the option, and we will pay them to come, but they're not required.
Okay.
Yeah. Great question. Our parents are a tremendous asset. They are so highly skilled, dedicated, kind, I, I mean, heart and soul of this school. They're pretty amazing, so, uh, some of them might have clients, but they will get paid extra and encouraged to come. And then lastly, I do wanna call out this, uh, I know that I have a, I have a, a name sometimes, uh, my favorite childhood movie was Pollyanna, and it remains to be one of my favorite. And so I do wanna quickly call out that we do have progress to make here too. So there's a lot of wonderful things, and we're very thankful uh for the things we have. We do have uh some challenges needed around data and the student data really being part of our ownership and decision-making with our intervention process, and that's typical. So what I mean by that, cause that's a lot of, you know, words, is it's easy to refer kids to Lisa for intervention when they're struggling, right? Like, oh, Lisa, you need to have, you need to take this kid. And it doesn't mean our teachers don't love and cherish our kids, it means they want help. So we do need to have that reflective conversation, whether it comes to academics or behavior, where the teacher in the classroom is the first line of development. When you look at all of the educational studies, intervention can be really great and helpful, but great first teaching is actually the most effective way for a child to close a gap. So our work will be whatever tools that we have in the classroom, with small classrooms, with paraeducators, that we can layer that in, so it doesn't just become a referral to intervention. That's gonna be, and it was what we set our year on, Liz and I, in this very room, talking about that ownership of struggling students, whether that's behavior or academics, and really helping teachers in the classroom with resources here. Um, it's not systemic, there's not like a person or anything, it's just an overall census of, okay, what else can I do? What else can I do? Um, okay, maybe now we see this really struggling um situation, that I need some intensive one-to-two, one-on-one intervention. So that's, that's one of our lists. So, okay, okay. All right, um, we're gonna switch, do we need to take a break?
I would love a break.
Okay, let's, um, yeah, I'm gonna pause the recording, let's take a little break, cause we've been going at this an hour and 15 minutes. Get the brain resting, and we're in a great transition part, great.
And I opened the door for the
I am, hold on one second. Okay, we are back from our break. And we are gonna, I believe that
So then, three, which, right?
Yes, it is, thank you, that's exactly what I was So we are gonna transition now to uh three academic intervention programs. Let me share my screen with
By the way, this is, I thought very
I love that.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's what we're gonna talk about first, which is, um, but it's attached to the board agenda, and the board has it in front of you, and at home, you're seeing it, which is, um, uh, we, as a team, decided, and the teachers did a beautiful job filling out my form, uh, and we took some time to organize it in a visually pleasing way, um, and really tried to highlight, um, Um, and really tried to highlight, um, not every grade, well, every grade level, but our our staff, more importantly. Um, one of the wonderful things that makes Kaijakas special are the people. Uh, and we know that people, teachers in particular, paraeducators and support staff and leaders, um, hopefully leaders too, uh, make all the difference. So what you have in front of you, and what you'll see online, as we quickly go through this, is each grade level. So we start out with just our administrative and support team. Um, and then you'll see by grade level, the teacher, um, but also their overarching, obviously, this isn't everything that somebody learns in TK or in Kinder first, all the way through middle school. But really, that distal, the big picture of the things that they're learning within English and math. Uh, and then each one of the the sheets also highlight either special activities or a message from the teacher. So it'll give you kind of that picture, uh, how we do our work here. And I think it it nicely looks at um how great our teachers are and the hard work they put forward. So if you have any questions around this, Liz or I can answer. But for the board, I think it gives you a nice base and a resource to feel, uh, especially when we start looking at the LCAP and planning, hey, what are we doing? And how do we, you know, how do we move forward, or how do we reflect on that piece? So that was the point of it. On the website, just so you're aware, on the very front page of the website, there's a staff picture, and you'll notice on the heading of it, it says, click on the picture below if you wanna see highlights of each grade level on our staff programs. So you can actually click that, this is PDF is pulled up, and you can see each of these. Um, where it's going is, uh, each teacher has a page on the website. It hasn't been fully developed over the last few years. So these will also be located on each teacher's um page, but that hasn't been done yet. Sean and I are working through that, so. Um, so. Any questions or, no, okay, great. There's a couple not pictured, I tried to note them on the bottom, uh, that's because it's our school pictures. Okay, so let's transition back. So since we're talking about um academic program.
On three-point-three?
Yes, we are. Since we're talking about academic programs, um, we are going to enlist just handed it out, and we will add it to, um, there's copies here, but we will definitely add it to um our website curriculum. So the base of our academic programs, first and foremost, starts with the people, which we spoke of. Um, I think all of you are aware that we have uh elementary paraeducators um in each of our classes. We actually just hired another one, it was on our February updates, we had an open position for quite some time, and hired a new person, uh, who's lovely and is doing a great job, jumped right in. Um, and then you have the wonderful relationship with the individuals, and then you have what they teach and what they utilize to help support their teaching. So Liz is gonna take a moment, our principal, and um highlight some of the core curriculum they utilize.
There we are. So on that list is really the base at core, because all of our teachers supplement the materials, what is needed for their kids. Um, so we'll go over what we have as a basic model. So all the core curriculums um are state-adopted, we choose them, we go through a an adoption process for about a year, trying different, we go through the curriculum, we narrow it down to two or three, and then we try it. So we go through a unit of of math or reading or social studies, and really try it, and see if it's gonna work for our kids and for our teachers. Um, and then we choose ones, and um it's, so far, we've been very, very pleased with what we've chosen. Some of the um programs are, for instance, the MyMath was supposed to, the math was supposed to have already been adopted again, however, the state has moved that um line a little bit further. And so pretty soon, we're gonna be highlighting some of the math programs again. Um, but let's start with English Language Arts, so we have the Wonders Program, which now actually includes our ELD classes, we just ordered that. So that way, it's matching what's going on in the classrooms. But it's ELD through and TK, with eighteen little TKs who have their own curriculum as well. But it's also the Wonders Program, so it's all encompassing, it's all building on it on itself. So it goes through all, from TK all the way through fifth grade, and included in there, they're talking about multiple genres of um study, not, a lot of nonfiction reading, fiction reading, fantasy poetry. Um, so all of those books, and so they get to really kind of delve in from a basic level, and then all the way up through fifth grade, so by the time they're in fifth grade, they're writing and reading and sharing some really great um information from what they've learned throughout this, most of them five years, now they're with TK, well, six years. Um, and really putting out some really great things. So kindergarten TK, that's all from A- Alligator to in fifth grade, giving a speech about how frogs are living in specific apartments. Um, so it's been really, really a nice base for our kids. Within that program, there are lessons that will challenge kids. There are also, like, we're talking about intervention, the first um piece of our students' development can take place right in the classroom. So within this um program, there's also a lot of space where the teachers can go into online and find lessons, so they can, I need, this kid needs help with some, or some reading or comprehension, and they can do some um lessons for their small groups in their classrooms. So that's the first line of of defense, so to speak. And then if that gets harder, then we send, the teachers have all written what they've tried to do in the classroom, where the kids have seen what kind of lessons, and how that's working, and if it's not working as well as we'd like. That's when we send our students our information to our intervention program. But the first line of defense is in the classroom. So because the teachers are with those kids every single day, they know what they're like, they know, oh, it's a bad day to good day. So they know what to expect from their kids. So the math is, we use the MyMath program for TK through fifth. And then for middle school is the Big Ideas. And all of those um lessons, TK all the way through eight are talking about conceptual learning. They're building, math is inherently built scale over scale over scale, so starting at the very beginning, going to the end. Um, there's some very deep level learning going on in our algebra room right now. We are able to split our middle school classes, so they get some really individualized instruction. So um, if you were to walk into that eighth-grade algebra room, or even listen outside, I don't like to disturb sometimes, but they are answering some really deep questions um from Ms. Johnson. They're doing the Pythagorean theorem right now in the grade-level eighth-grade class. Is it tough? Yes, but they're progressing, so it's what those.
Really quick, Liz, I just wanna make sure everyone has that picture, uh, because I didn't know this, obviously, coming in new, is in math, you have two math teachers for every grade level. So Mr. Anderson and Ms. Johnson teach sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade math, they both do. So for example, we were referencing the seventh-grade class um last year, which is currently the eighth-grade class, which is twenty-one students, right?
Twenty.
Oh, sorry, twenty students. That means that their math class is one to ten. Half of them are with Ms. Johnson, half are with Mr. Anderson. And that's the same with seventh grade and the sixth grade. So it's, uh, it was a strategy that was put in place uh two years back here, knowing that they wanted more individualized math. We talked about how systemically middle school math is an issue across California. One of the strategies Kaijakas did, how many years ago?
Oh, a long time ago.
Wow, it's been a while.
My kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
We kind of went back and for a couple of years, but we went back to the split-class model.
So the reason why I bring this up as an example is, remember how we talked about the board study sessions? And how we were talking about academic program, we're talking about board goals, you know, and then fiscal? Is, it is important for us to have transparency, that we're investing um quite a lot of money in middle school math, with two teachers in a one-to-ten ratio. Um, but do we look at it and say, does the academic achievement of students then connect to that? If I had two middle school math teachers, and my scores were at like twenty percent of kids' standard, we may have to relook at that. And the board still may decide to relook at that. Um, and staff will make a recommendation, but that's kind of that lens of putting all three of those things together to say, okay, I have a pulse on that, I see how you're doing it, that works, you have your own children through it. Um, is this what we wanna continue to do? Is that the recommendation moving forward from staff and the board? Accept that recommendation with that investment. Val, did you have a comment?
Kind of, what do you use to measure success or or change or?
Yeah.
And how long has it been used?
So we use, obviously, we have the state tests, uh, the state test scores, which is the CAS. But then we also use what's called the MAP, which is the map assessment, it is the test that um Lisa was just talking about. And the important part about that is, because the kids get it three times a year, we see where they are, and are they growing? So have they improved? You have a one-to-ten ratio in in teaching. Have they gained skill and have they gained it at the rate they're expected to compared to the national norm? So it's one thing to say, oh, gosh, you know, Jen improved, but did she, did I improve enough uh as I should have developed throughout that year or half a year for eighth-grade students? So the math assessment becomes key in that. And it's, is it measure of academic progress? All the acronyms. So the measure of academic progress right now is our measure of that.
So when you get that that data in, let's say the student is falling back, what do you do particularly for for seventh and eighth grade? So you know they're going on, but.
Great segue. Go ahead.
No, I I just was interested in in what you do to help them, number one, but number two, what goes with them onto high school, let's say, ninth grade?
So for instance, in their key folders, their key note folder.
Right.
So let's do the first part back first.
First part, yes, so um the results come back from the map test, we have them in-house, so they're very, within
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. Even the kids can see what they have um scored, so they know what their last score was, we're trying to have them set some goals to do better each time. Um, to really try hard, because sometimes it can get a little tedious, to be honest, for some of the kids, oh, we're gonna do. However, if they're helping to be part of this whole system and set their own goals, um, I think it makes it more meaningful. So if they do look like they are falling behind, there are differentiated lessons within those, all those textbooks um that the teachers can use to reteach lessons or specific skills to get them to move on.
And and then the second part of that is that Sarah Johnson, who's one of our math teachers, um, has uh two periods a day of math intervention. So her schedule is rounded out by having time in her schedule to individually work with students who are struggling with math.
We're trying to catch them, but we do, like Jen was saying, you know, these numbers are really great, but we but we wanna be honest and say, we have some kids that are missing some skills, and so we're really trying to catch them up and fill their buckets back up, e- especially in the elementary, get them ready for middle school and then high school.
And then those end-of-year scores, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Anderson look at to um decide moving forward for the next year? How should they group these students so that they're grouped similarly, so they can teach to what the needs are of that, of that group of students? So is there much movement? I I because I had a child who was always moving back and forth between the different classes, you know, the levels. Um, is there much movement going on?
There is some, there is some, um, you see your kids, once they get some of that really um specialized care, so to speak, they're getting it. If they're, they matured at a level of age or whatever, and their skills are coming, so they can move from a regular core grade-level class, they could go to the algebra class, there's nothing stopping that at the end of the eighth-grade year, even if they were struggling, struggling in third grade or fifth grade. So.
I think that actually transitions nicely into the intervention side, that's next, actually, so perfect. Uh, it's good.
For a question, I've never heard about the split math, I didn't know, right, the one-to-ten? Are there, is there anything else that's done that way, like STEM or anything else? But that's math is the, math is probably more important to have.
Right, and there, there's a lot of STEM going on all over campus, so whether it's in their um science classrooms, or we have an elective classroom, middle school specifically, Steve. They're doing projects, different kinds of cars and flight and racing, it's really fun. So our, I know that comes later, we'll talk about that, but um we do have a lot of opportunity for kids to use different ways to use their social studies even, and math and science and reading, so.
But that's the only one that's that's built in the master schedule in that way.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Can I just point out, it's ten thirty-five right now, and the signs up there, so that if we go till eleven, I thought we went till twelve, but for people that are watching, I mean, we just need to be cognizant of that we have twenty-five minutes left. The time check. Well, I don't wanna cut anybody off, but I mean, we wanna be cognizant of the time.
Yeah, and the agenda just has an open session time.
Well, but all the doors up there.
Yeah.
That's confusing, it said nine to eleven and all that. We, I don't care if we go longer, but I just have other people house in cyberspace.
I think we're gonna be right on track.
But this, this will be put on YouTube, so if they have to go, they can, they have to.
You're gone.
YouTube, we're in the.
Okay, so we put it on our website, we email the link to all our families, and then I, the link is actually YouTube.
Well, I think I'm one of the four followers.
Thank you, um, thank you for following us. So the next slide is intervention, and we've actually talked a lot about it. So um, we've already talked about the assessment side, thank you, Liz. You're not off the hook, there's more. Thank you. Um, uh, we've talked about uh intervention, so currently, uh, Ms. Johnson is working specifically with third group, fifth grade, that's in the targeted area based on data, um, that needed to have additional support, uh, with students in math. And then um with that, her main focus, and all of these, again, built, anything that's blue and underlined is a link. So if you're like really interested in it, then you would click that link, and it will give you a synopsis of what that is. Mostly, it's directly to the website or publisher of that, uh, whether it's the assessment or the actual curriculum. So um, the Rocket Math is looking at automaticity with math. So one of the identifying factors from those upper elementary grades is that there's some students who still struggle with some of those automatic math concepts, which then, of course, make that layering complexity of long division, fraction, all those things more difficult. Um, because how do you find a common denominator in fractions if you don't have automatic math facts, right? It makes it really hard to do. Uh, or when you do like the greatest common factor of a number, and you don't, if you're not automatic with some of your math facts, it makes it very difficult uh to do. And you'll see the same thing in the area of literacy. I will say, um, because Lisa won't, um, I had the pleasure of sitting in her reading intervention sessions. Um, as some of you know, I spent years uh with reading intervention as my specialty. Um, and it's really one of my happy places. Uh, she does a phenomenal job in balancing the needs of her groups and really having a uh just tools to work with kids with decoding and fluency and sight word development, reading in context and comprehension. And it's exactly what you would wanna see, in fact, it's what you would normally pay um a lot of money to private tutoring center to to have, and we have it right here for the kids who need it. So a really good job you set. Okay. Um, and then in the area of English language development and special education. So prior to uh this year, so last year, we had integrated English language development, meaning that um within the classroom setting and in the core curriculums that uh Liz just discussed, our classroom teachers would do English language development for our students um that were designated to be in that league, right? So in a state testing inventory, uh, they came in with a primary language other than English. This year, we added, uh, because it wasn't area, uh, identified within uh the local control accountability planner, LCAP process that we needed more individualized attention for English language development. And so we were lucky enough that our, uh, we had a teacher who has what's called a BCLAD, which is a bilingual certification to teach English language development. And she is doing individual and small group English language development for our attending students that are working to develop English. And so Melissa, that, that is Ms. Leo, who is our music teacher, um, and it's Leo Williams. So she just got, yeah. And I'm working on Spanish with her sister. I was like, let her get her feet wet with English language development, but yes, she does have a BCLAD, so, which is a bilingual certification. Um, so yeah, so she's working with that and being able to work in small group. Uh, Lisa is our testing coordinator, and so she looks at that reclassification process. So another state testing is looking at how they develop English, is it fluent, and can they be reclassified as an, uh, out of English learner status and into uh English uh fluent. And so she does that along with supporting that work. And then, uh, we have, of course, special education services for our students. Um, our programs are in nature, it's called high to moderate, meaning. Uh, our programs are in nature, it's called high to moderate, meaning that they're students in the general education sector, we don't have special day classes on our locations, and we have an agreement with San Luis Postal that looks at students who might need more severe, um, or intensive services, and which are kiddos go, um, to San Luis Postal, they need what's called a special day class site. So that's kind of where we're at with that, and, uh, we also have a, a group of speech services. Uh, and the nice thing with speech at, here at Hayekus, is that we're in a hook to do, uh, Mr. Bill does an amazing job, and he does pre-early intervention speech services as well as IEP or special education services. So, because he's integrated into our school culture, he's able to work with students who might be, you know, right on that edge of being able to benefit from some speech services, and so he does free intervention as well as, um, articulated speech services.
I'm actually gonna answer this question, like, do we have five oh four?
We do.
Yep. What's five oh four?
Uh, five oh four is, uh, American Disability Act, and it's for people who have a mental or physical impairment that is not identified through special education services, so there's certain qualifiers for special education, and one of the qualifiers is that you would need direct service, five oh four usually housed in accommodations versus services. So it could be a physical impairment that needs an accommodation, or it could be an attention processing that really doesn't need the measure of a, uh, individual education plan, but does need some queuing or accommodations. The world of five oh fours and special education. Okay. Um, that is, and now questions, answers, Lisa is ready to answer any questions on intervention programs, uh, or myself, uh, or Liz, of course, um, if not, that will round out this agenda, I know we moved to our last agenda, I know. I know it's a lot, and you have all these resources to process and think about, and that's why we're doing this over time, which is great. You okay?
I had a question, I totally forgot it.
You can still ask it, even when we're talking about our last agenda. Thank you.
Oh, um, how many, how many students are being sent to, um, to San Luis Coastal right now for more intensive intervention?
I guess my theory says from a bunch of children.
It's gone, yes, it's gone, um, we have some, there's two
We can take them.
four-year-olds, and then there's an older student.
So there's how?
Three to five.
I think there's three to five right now.
Three to five, okay, so we're not, I was just questioning, are we sending fifteen kids or?
No, no.
No, that, that's a great question, because there will, if there ever is a conversation around critical mass, so if we had a critical mass needed here, and that's what we would reflect on and look at, would it actually be better for our kids to be here at their home school, and, uh, it, and also grade levels? So the hard part is, you know, you have a TKer and then a sixth grader, that's not an appropriate standard of grade levels. So, uh, but we always have to look at the critical mass, if we would house our own programs.
Thank you.
So we trend towards them, basically.
Right, right, right.
Okay, uh, we're gonna kind of veer into the next one, uh, which we'll talk about transition to high school, and then we'll round out uh, our presentation today with the electives and special programs that we have.
Listen, for listeners, it's three point four.
Three point four. So one of the areas that is near and dear to my heart, I will say, um, and is a commitment that I made in the hiring process here, is really looking at that ne- next step for middle school, and what else can we do for our families and kids? Um, I've spent years of my life dedicated to college and career readiness, and, um, really promoting advocacy for parents and kids to look at options when they finish high school. And what I mean by that is not everybody has a safe path, but we want them at the end of their four years to say, this question, my option, because I'm working and I want to be at home, and it's free for two years, and the promise is amazing, right? Um, or is a four-year my best option? Or I am an amazing welder, um, or automotive tradesman, and I want to do this, um, and what is my next option in a vocational setting or trade school? But it's about the choices and having the awareness of those choices. Um, so, I'm really excited to partner with Tara Walker, who's our part-time counselor here. Uh, so she does a lot of social emotional support, but then she also is looking at, um, the development of, uh, transition to high school. Uh, and I'll do a plug for her, because it's on the third star down, this Wednesday, she is doing a broadcast on transition to high school, uh, so the link will be sent to all parents, it'll also be on our YouTube site the next day, that goes over all the things, it's like the top eight tips when you transition to high school. What do parents need to know, what should kids know, what are the questions you should ask, the things you should consider? Because, um, not to be dramatic, but in your ninth and tenth grade year, the choices you make will close doors on those options that we're just talking about really fast. And it's, it's shocking, because they're like just babies going to high school, but all of a sudden, it's like, oh, honey, you didn't take that class, now you have to do this. And then you're like, what? Um, or, gosh, I had this dream and I'm a stellar student, but I didn't take any classes at Questa over the summer, which then closed that option for really competing at a high, high level, uh, because of the how many periods per day at high school app. So she's gonna get into that, so that people have that knowledge, and again, have the choice at the end.
Is, just out of curiosity, is Templeton involved with this, with their independent study program? Um, because I know San Luis Coastal partners with Templeton, and that option for students?
So I'm not sure what you mean by are they involved with it?
I mean, are, are, are parents being made, are made aware of it? Uh, my, my younger son, he, he chose to go through independent study with Templeton, which was the best choice for him. But to find out about that program for him, I, I, I did not really have previous knowledge about it, and when he was, you know, it's hard to be a musician and playing late at night and making it to school at eight AM in the morning, and so that was really the best choice, and also he wanted to take a lot of classes at Questa.
Right.
Um, so, but had I known this information back when he was in eighth grade, that we have this option, it would have been much less of a struggle for.
You know, I'll have to ask, I don't know if she.
Because I, you know, I think that's really important for parents to know that, yes, traditional high school is out there, but there are different options, and particularly with Questa, you know, there's a, a lot of different opportunities that our kids do have in this community.
Yeah, I, well, I don't know if she highlights independent study model, I will definitely make a note of that and see what she does, for sure, thank you for that. Um, so what's happening now is that sixth and seventh grade are in their history classes, going to be getting, uh, career exploration. So they'll take inventories, they're, basically, they look at, what are they interested, what are they good at, what are they thinking about being when they want to grow up? And then more importantly, what's the path to being that? So it starts now in sixth grade, this is all new, uh, so that will take place in, uh, March and April and sixth and seventh grade. What's happening right now in eighth grade is Tara has started the individual parent meetings. So she's called every eighth grade family, she's made individual appointments with every parent and kiddo, and they can meet either via Zoom or in person, and they sit down and they have those conversations, they talk about what's called a four-year plan. They don't make a four-year plan, because that depends on what high school you're gonna go to, but they talk about, hey, when you start high school and you're looking at counseling, here are the requirements when you look at a UC, right? Uh, like, for example, UC Davis, or UC Santa Barbara, UCLA, this is what's required. When you look at languages, those type of things, no matter what high school you go to. Um, so they'll talk about that, they'll talk about career technical education pathways, and what, uh, they'll basically give them a guide to what to look for at Morro Bay or at Coast. Uh, you, uh, many of you are familiar that Coast has some pretty amazing career technical pa- pathways, especially in the area of, uh, arts, media, and entertainment, design, print shop, um, Dan Hartchild does a phenomenal job. Uh, also ag, but look at all those aspects, so that parents are aware of that, and they'll be able to individually talk with Tara about those hope streams, goals, um, and anything we can do to help facilitate that transition. In addition to that, things we've always had is that we have, um, administrative or counseling visits from our, uh, schools. So for example, Morro Bay High School, we've reached out to San Luis High and Coast Union to come in, meet with our kids, talk with them. Our kids are also invited to those schools for their visits, for, like, in Paso Robles, we call it Bearcat one oh one, but it's when you actually have a visit to those schools, those, that has already been in place. And then lastly, um, Ms. Peterson and I have partnered on our mock interviews for our eighth grade. So because eighth grades quickly transitions, um, all of our eighth grade students are going to have a portfolio when they leave our school, um, and that will have a letter of introduction of who they are, their resume, and they will have some type of work they can showcase. And it can be art, because they love art with Mrs. Sofield, or it could be their lab report, because they love science in just their way of class, it could be an essay for Ms. Peterson's class, um, whatever it may be, within them in a beautiful little folder when they leave us. That means they could apply for a job in the summer, if they wanted to be, um, you know, a helper, or more importantly, when they start to then present themselves, you know, when they become fifteen, sixteen, all those things, they have a baseline to start with. And last but not least, they're actually gonna go through interviews, so they will have to come in, uh, to the gym, there'll be a panel of three adults, they'll introduce themselves, um, and they're gonna have a little interview, uh, with those adults, um, as they transition, so just preparing them. The goal of that is, um, we don't want someone's home experiences in life to be a, a, a variant that we can't control. So some of you are really involved in your kiddo's lives, and you practice this week, sorry, right, you'd say to your daughter, hey, when you meet somebody, since they were little, probably Carrie, if I know you, a little bit, and I know you did this, because I do it, please say yes, is when you meet somebody, you look them in the eye, you say, hi, I'm Jen, nice to meet you, and you handshake. Or in our pre-COVID, you put it out there and see if they're okay with it, fist bump, whatever that person does, right, navigate that. And we want every child to be able to navigate that social world, to present themselves, um, so they get a fair shake in the world, especially our pockets, or even more, a higher shake in the world, um, so that's kind of where we're at with those.
Have, um, have we explored doing any, um, field trips to Questa or Cal Poly? I do know Questa gives middle schoolers, um, tours of the campus and a, and sort of a brief overview of all the fun they can have there, the different programs.
Uh, they do go to Cal Poly, seventh grader, eighth grader goes to Cal Poly?
Okay, Sarah took them, well, even the elementary kids are going to field trips to Cal Poly at different, different departments over there.
Uh huh.
Um, but even, um, Sarah Johnson last year took the eighth graders to Cal Poly to check out schools, see what it looks like, get them excited.
I don't think, well, have we done visits to Questa? I don't believe, I don't think so, yeah.
I know they do, I know they do that.
We're trying to do
I, I mean, it just happened, I'm, I'm taking ceramics courses at Questa, so we get tours of kids through all the time, and of course, you know, they get excited about playing with clay and.
Let me check on that availability of, uh, a tour, and what grade level that might be most appropriate, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, great suggestion.
That's a good question.
Of course.
Seventh, eighth grade, or six, seven, eight. Do you have a part-time counselor?
I, we have a part-time counselor for the whole school.
Right, exactly. Do you find, particularly for, for the upper grades, that the need for a counselor has increased?
Yes.
To the point where maybe a part-time counselor might not be adequate?
You know, it's one of the things we're looking at, I will tell you, it's, it's come up numerous times with parent input in our LCAP meetings, um, is, is it enough? Uh, she's here from nine, uh, she gets here a little earlier than that, uh, to one every day, so those are kind of prime times. Usually if somebody's gonna settle out, it takes a little bit of time, obviously, go after the bell rings. Uh, if they make it to one, usually they're fine in the day, so it's a, it's a, every day we have that. Um, but it is something that's been brought up and we're looking at, but, uh, and depending on how far we go with the layer of support with transition and college and career readiness, we'll have to weigh that, uh, with the time needed for social emotional support.
Right, my connection with La Buna, um, after the pandemic, you know, and students came back, it, it seemed to be considerably, uh, greater need
Yes.
for students to be able to talk to people.
I agree.
Um, and I'm wondering if the same thing is happening here to a point where, where maybe a full-time counselor, or at least access to counseling could be used, uh, and that, and that could be another teacher, I don't know, um, but.
We will definitely, uh, we are definitely keep, that is on our radar, um, and right now with a one, uh, you know, which she's part-time, we're a hundred and seventy-one, it's basically the extrapolate that as like a one to three hundred and fifty ratio. That's in the, that's in the acceptable range of counseling services for middle school, um, but we are absolutely keeping a pulse on that.
Changes have happened.
That's for sure.
We have two.
Thank you for that, Val.
We have two that fill five days a week, so there's a lot of, um, appointments going on, kids can make appointments, parents can.
Right, well, the bottom line is nobody's been turned away because there's no time, or somebody's gonna be adding what they need.
You got it, but we are keeping a pulse on that, and we will revisit that as a possibility under, um, our LCAP plan. Yep.
The, the counseling is those emotional issues, or why, why are they going to the council?
So, uh, a variation of things, but yeah, there's a lot of, um, family dynamics that are way heavy on little ones, and they're not sure how to process. And we know that that's been intense over the last few years, it's been more intense than normal, um, you have stress and anxiety, um, you have, uh, divorces that occur on a daily basis, and that's hard to manage. It's not, in most cases, uh, what Tara does as our counselor is not long-term counseling. She comes in, works with kids, it gives them a safe place to process. If there is weekly counseling, counseling needed, that's what Liz is referring, referring to, is on Wednesdays currently, we have a mental health therapist that is here for three to four hours, um, it's a short day, so she's not here all the time, um, five hours on that day, and so she has a pace lover pitch she keeps every single week, that have those longer-term issues of support. So that's our balance right now, uh, but we will keep a gauge on, um, the necessary hours and need for that.
Changes have occurred, um, you know, students have a lot more access to communication outside of school, and and oftentimes, parents aren't really aware of it at all. They keep it to themselves, but in keeping it to themselves, they're, they're creating their own problem. And they have nobody to share it with.
Yeah, these just weigh heavy on kids at a younger and younger age, and we, I agree with you. Uh, I think what you're referencing is the exposure of technology and like that unfiltered technology, not our devices, they're filtered, but what's out there, uh, in the real world, and it is, it weighs heavy, and their little, little brains aren't sure how to, um, process it yet, because they're, they're still babies, so, um, we absolutely will keep a pulse on that.
Unfortunately, parents and teachers aren't quite sure how to process it either.
Oh, no, absolutely, yeah.
It's, it's, it's going faster than, than our old brains, uh.
Experienced.
Okay.
Seasoned.
Lastly, what we want to start being able to do is Tara has this new group of kiddos, so these eighth graders, these individual appointments, is never to take the place of the high school counselor and the awesome programs that, whether it be San Luis High, Morro Bay, uh, Templeton, Paso Robles, Cambria, uh, Coast Union, wherever they go, um, is that they always have a place back to us for a thinking board of guidance, because this is the home they've known for so many years, and the beauty of being small is that connection. I love seeing, um, we have tons of high schoolers who come visit Mary and Liz, and they want to see their teachers as long as they're not teaching, uh, and check back in, because that's that special linkage of support, and I think we're gonna see that even more uh, with those questions and ideas, is Tara builds these relationships. Okay, I'm gonna just, uh, transition us to electives, if we're good, uh, electives. So I, most of you know, we have a robust elective program, um, here, and again, that's not a normal standard. Um, every child gets music from a music teacher, every, uh, weekly, every child gets art from an art teacher, weekly. Um, right now, I'm talking elementary, uh, TK to five, uh, typically drama, every child up until December got drama, and we are literally centimeters away for drama for our last trimester, which is gonna be really exciting, uh, and then hopefully long-term drama, uh, as we, as we move forward, and everybody, every kiddo gets library um, and literacy development, um, through a, like, a, a library teacher. So that's our base right now, which is pretty remarkable. As the kids go through our system, then they also, they start to see the things that they really like through this process, and when they're in middle school, they get three choices of basically the elective wheel that happens. And when they're in middle school, they get three choices of basically the elective wheel that happens. So they get to choose daily art, daily music, drama typically, except for this semester, or sorry, excuse me, STEAM, which is that science, technology, engineering, fun stuff that happens. Yearbook, we do have mentor slash teacher assistants. And then our history teacher does a historical war gaming. So they basically build, and some of the kids, I mean, I am thinking of like one of your sons would love this, that they build their own, they build the models, they build the landscape, the topography of the board, and create replicas of historic battles that have taken place. I mean, so you're incorporating in that not only the history lesson, but art and design with all of that, with a little bit of narration that happens. So lots of cool options with that. Ms. Leo, our music teacher, is next trimester really gonna go back to guitar as an emphasis with our middle school. It was a high interest level in the first trimester. And she is currently included within this, doing what we all know in fourth grade, right? Which is the recorders. I think I can still play Mary had a little lamb on my recorder. But more importantly and special, I think is.
Why, why can't we advance from?
Uka ladies in fifth grade.
They're durable.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, exactly. And then the Uka ladies in fifth grade, so that will be great. So that's our elective offerings. And last but not least, if you go to the last slide, and you guys, because you have lived in Caycass and been part of this special place for so long now, there's tremendous needs to celebrate here. These are a few of them, and they're in partnership with our community, but that make Caycass special and give access to really extension of learning throughout our community. I love that, I love the welcome of the River Flows. I mean, that's just starting off the year with such positivity and energy. Parents and kids on campus, wonderful day before school. This year was on my birthday, so it was amazing, I love River Flows. We have our drama productions, which are pretty darn tremendous. We have athletics, ASV for fourth and fifth, as well as sixth through eighth grade. Transition to high school dress-up days, holiday performances, Peace Day, April 20th, we'll talk more about that. Fall carnival, Golden Falcon buddies and mentors. Another great pleasure of having K8 or TK8 is the availability of the bigger kids mentoring younger kids. One, and that's one of my favorite things to see is the book reading and art projects they do with those sixth, seventh and eighth grade kiddos with your younger students. And we are bringing back swim lessons. We have traditionally done that here, with COVID, it became on a pause. I believe it's essential when you live this close to the ocean to teach water safety. That will be the last, I believe, three weeks of school this year. All grade levels will run through that, making sure we have water safety happening with at least two lifeguards and water safety instructors, our swim lesson teachers. One of my favorite jobs on earth, I will say, was teaching swimming when I was in college. But so just, really just pretty awesome things to even add to all the academics that we've talked about. And it goes without saying, none of these things wouldn't be possible without the board's support and the community members' support and service clubs that just love and basically hug this school.
Are the lands still providing swim passes to the kids for the summer, or?
I know, is that.
They have, yes, so now it's a little bit different now, they mark it off of their pass.
Right.
Right, yes. And that's for, you have summer, just to go.
Oh, yeah.
Liz responded, yes, I don't know if they can hear you as well. No, no, I just wanted to make sure that, that you said yes to that.
And then I have some questions too. You know, I know in the past, it's been frustration that we really, it's difficult to find out how our kiddos are achieving after they leave here. Have we made any progress on sort of tracking our graduates once they, once they leave our school district? Is there?
Yeah. I can, I can answer that a little bit. I meet with the, especially the Morro Bay High School principal. We've talked about how our kids are doing, his first year was last year, especially. So we really talked about our kids and how they will transition as freshmen, and we talked about some of the older kids and how they're doing. That's gonna, I think we're gonna really expand that in both places. Some of our kids are now moving over the coast as well, so it's met with him as well. So I think that's helpful, but I think we really need to work on, see how they're doing, what we need to do better to prepare them for high school.
I think that'd be a great goal. I, I hate the word tracking, we'll just say stalk. I love stalking, I love stalking over there.
That's a better word.
I know that it has been my passion to find and make sure I stay connected to, for example, my kiddos at Paso Robles High School, and there's many, many things. So I think it's absolutely doable, it's one of those things that we need to do, and it really fits nicely with our plan for transition to high school and college. Also because there's certain scholarships that relate to Caycass students. So it actually gives us a wonderful incentive to tap on and to support and connect to those families and kids. So I think it would be a task, we still need to work on what that looks like and how we do it, but a worthwhile one, for sure.
You, you know, like a employer would do an exit interview, but something like the high schools, you know, that kind of love what you do. They won't all do it, but you can get feedback at least from.
But my other question is, is can we access that information too? I mean, because of privacy issues, you know, I mean, if we, you know, somebody wanted to see how my child did while they were in high school.
It would be something, because they're not our district, that there would need to be permissions. So like in Paso, it'd be really nice, because we could easily say, all the kids from Georgia Brown, and they went to Flamsen, and you could do that, because you're all one system.
Right.
It would definitely need to be permissioned.
Uh huh.
Yep. So that's, those are the nuances of that task. But I don't think there are challenges that we can't find a way to get acceptance of, look at what we do with it. Why is it important to us? Like, it has to, there has to be a reason for it, right?
Right.
So it can't just be all wondering. So it's like, why would that be important to us? What would we do with the information? How would we highlight or bring back our high school students to, you know, talk with our sixth and seventh grade students, whatever it may be? But we have to develop that plan. But we can definitely look at the possibility of developing that plan.
Well, all the principals are open to that, so.
Yeah, of course.
So, I hope that, first of all, let me thank Liz and Lisa for your support and help and coming, obviously, on a Saturday that helps support our work. And Lisa for helping out today. And I hope that this gave us, I know it gave you a lot of information, but kind of that baseline picture of who we serve, how we serve them, what are, what we're looking at doing, and really just the heart of our work with our kids, which is why we come here every single day and our families. And then I know more questions will come from processing all this. And so anytime that we want to meet, talk about, or at our next board meeting, which is just Wednesday, we want to look at those future agenda items, because this kind of like, you know, percolates. And you go, hey, you know, we talked about this, a great future agenda item, the board could discuss from this information too.
Wednesday, the date?
Yes.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
At 5:30, 6:30?
It, coast starts at 6, opens at 6:30.
Be there.
Be there.
I'm putting all this together.
Thanks so much, I know this was a lot of work. Thank you for being here. Thank you for presenting.
Alrighty, it's up to item 4.1, the turn.